A member will be recognized once you raise your hand, so be sure to raise your hand. You will be recognized and you will have three minutes to speak on items, yeah, on, yeah, well, you'll just have minutes to speak on items, not on the agenda. So please raise your hand. If you choose to speak. Yeah, we have one person, just give me a moment. Okay. Hey, when I don't have controls. Steve, we will be calling on you in a moment, just give me a moment to get set up. Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Greetings, city council members and city employees and Mayor Garcia. I want to thank the city for its excellent program of planting trees in beautiful Watsonville. Because of course, Watsonville is for the birds. The trees provide bird habitat, cooling in the summer particularly. It provides for a healthier city in terms of its climate, not to mention beauty. So I greatly appreciate the city of Watsonville continuing with the planting of the 16 oak trees and hope there are many more. Greenpeace, which is a great organization dedicated to the environment, has said California needs to plant at least 1 million trees as a result of both the drought in the last decade and the fires in the last few years. So I'm hoping Watsonville will take that to heart and do so. I'm also encouraging people who are watching this program, watching this meeting this evening. If you're with, if you are a Watsonville resident, I am hoping you will consider getting a live tree, a living tree in a pot of soil with roots that you can plant in your yard. We need the trees and hopefully it will bring business to the local nursery, nursery people, also Home Depot sells them and they are worth having because they are everlasting reminder of your commitment, your personal commitment to the environment and to making our city more beautiful. So thank you again, and I will now take my leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there another person that wishes to speak?
Mayor, I don't see anybody else with their hands up, but I just want to make sure that individuals that are on the phone know that they can raise their hand by pressing star nine, or you can raise the hand using the icon on your screen. But no one else has their hand up, I guess.
Okay, we'll move on then to oral communications from the council. Each council member has two minutes to speak and we'll start off with Trina, did you hear? Are you there? Oh yeah, there you are. I see you now. You're, you're muted, Trina.
I didn't, timing is everything and just not knowing when the timing is there makes a difference. I just want to let everybody know that the Salvation Army bell ringing has changed a bit. We still encourage those of you that see the red bell to help contribute to this community. All of their proceeds do stay here. We're still trying to figure out how to best do it through COVID, but I know that they're still looking for our community support for meals in this, in this community through their organization. So hoping that that would be something people will look out for in the tradition of giving back in the community. I know that a lot of our other nonprofits are also looking for the same, especially in our COVID environment where they haven't had their opportunity to do their standard type of form of fundraising projects and events, so please keep that in mind as well. COVID is here, it's with us, it's down the street, it's around the corner. It may be invisible, but, but we all have to be COVID safe through this holiday. And to have the patience to get us all through this holiday, please look out for your family members. You don't know where this is ever going to come from and all of us are susceptible. And we don't need to bring this risk into our homes for our families, especially those that are at risk. So please stay COVID safe and in compliance with what our standards are that we have. And I know that our city manager will discuss this a bit more. So again, thank you for your, your time and efforts and I'll sign out my last 30 seconds. Thanks.
Thank you, Trina. Moving on to Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. I went this Friday to the arts. They were selling art at Roma Park. I thought it was, that was a really good idea and really cool. I got some Christmas stuff there, Christmas stocking stuff, so we got to continue to encourage the arts. Stay your distance, wear your mask, wash your hands. This is Councilman Trina Copeland pointed out, COVID is still here with us and we do need to continue to physically follow our guidelines. And that said, we, we understand that Christmas is coming and a lot of folks do normally get together, families. We need to kind of think about it differently this year and do virtual as much as we can. And again, but if you do get together, wash your hands, stay your distance and wear your mask. It's really important. Every life, every life matters as far as I'm concerned in this COVID. And so with that, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Aurelio. Moving on to Lowell.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. You know, this, this has been a very difficult year for so many. And I want to thank you for your, your service, first of all, because it's a lot to bite off with the economic uncertainties, the pandemic, the downturn of business in town. Places closed up. You know, all the social distancing that we've been forced to do, it's, it's very difficult. So please stay the course, ladies and gentlemen, with the COVID precautions. You know, we just had the, the Day of Infamy the other day, Pearl Harbor Day. That's a lot, that's a lot of history between today and then, but as always, we need to look out for the unexpected and be prepared. I'm sure John Lennon thought that too, 40 years ago and wished he had been more prepared. A couple of announcements, the area on aging will be meeting tomorrow. And that is a joint meeting with the seniors council. So if you're interested in seniors issues, please join me with the area on aging and seniors council. You can find that through, through, through your website. I was able to perform some trash patrol with some other community volunteers this last weekend. We picked up a lot of trash in the slough. It's an ongoing challenge and I urge everyone to help out and, and help us out. The holiday lights at the fairgrounds are certainly well worth the ticket and I hope that folks will be able to go there and enjoy that. Last of all, I just want to thank Trina Vice Mayor for two, for her two terms of service. Felipe for his two terms of service and he's former mayor. Welcome back Aurelio and Eduardo and Jimmy, congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell. Okay, moving on to Ari.
I have to unmute myself there. I'll try to go quickly so we can move. I want to thank you, Mayor, for, I know we'll have other points, but at this point, I want you to know. Wow, being mayor during this year of COVID has, being mayor is one thing, but being mayor during this year has been extraordinary. And I want to thank you for your leadership and your calm demeanor in the face of just everything, because there's been so much this year. And following that, please, everyone, wear your mask, socially distance. What is it? No more than three families that don't live in the same household to get together. We're going to start seeing more Thanksgiving and I know we're seeing them now, infections. Do want to say what Lowell and echo what Lowell said about the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds holiday lights. Not just from my point of view, but from the point of view of my students, they just loved it. So if you can get out there, it's a great thing to do in a car full of people, you can get food and, and drive through it. And it's, it's certainly, of course, very, a very happy circumstance and it's a positive. I want to say to Trina Conklin Gomez, thank you for all your help and guidance and education. I appreciate that, as this is only my second year and you have had two terms. And I appreciate all that and I know you have served the city of Watsonville and its residents well. And, and a huge thank you to Mr., Mr., Mayor Felipe. I'll call him that because that's who he's been for so many and I hope to see you both in all circumstances. And Mayor Felipe, thank you for getting me started and appointing me to committees. I appreciate that very much and I appreciate your guidance still as we continue. It looks like I'm not going to make my time. I thought I was going to have time left over. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Felipe.
And so, you know, also I want to, you know, echo the comments about people being safe out in the community. You know, the numbers are rising in COVID-19 in our community. And it's important that, that, that as this, you know, the, as people go out into the, the shopping season, that people stay safe. They practice safe distancing, they wash their hands and that they wear a facial covering. And speaking of shopping, you know, I want to, you know, make sure that I give the message that, that people keep their community on their mind when they go out holiday shopping this, this season. And that they shop local, that they shop within their community. You know, that every dollar they spend within their community stays in their community. Every dollar that goes out, of course, stays out of the community. Every, every dollar that they spend locally here in their community stays. It stays with our local schools, within our local community to help out parks, to help out schools, to help out local roads. So shop local and you know, if there's one thing that you could do for our local community, you could shop local and keep that as a civic, a civic point for yourself. The other thing that's going on is there's a virtual ribbon cutting for the Coastal Rail Trail. Segment seven, phase one, that's going to be this Thursday, December 10th at 12:30 to 1:00. That's going to happen, of course, on Zoom, so keep, keep checking online on social media for that. And that said, for my comments.
Okay, thank you, Felipe. And finally, Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for my connection issues. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to echo what many of my fellow council members have already mentioned about taking care of yourselves, taking care of your families and the community. There are two working vaccines out there. There is light at the end of the tunnel. We're, we're not that far off, so there really is no need to risk your own life, the lives of others. And so, you know, if we can just hold on tight a little bit, I know that we're going to get through this and we'll be a lot stronger for it. So please, happy holidays and please follow all guidelines. I also want to just thank Felipe, Trina and the mayor for their service this year. The mayor, you, you did great, once in a lifetime pandemic and it happened on your watch. You know, you, you did well and you steered us with, with great leadership and vision and courage. And so we thank you for that. Trina, I'm, you know, this is bitterly, I really, you know, I admire you, I respect you. I really enjoyed being able to work with you, just talking to you and getting to know you on a personal level. So I know we'll, we still have a meeting to go and, but thank you for everything. And Felipe, same here, you know, I will not forget our time in Mexico. That was very fun. I really appreciated getting to know you, being roommates. And so thank you for everything as well. And congratulations to Aurelio, welcome back. Congratulations to Jimmy, our incoming mayor, and welcome back Eduardo. And I look forward to working with all of you and yeah, you know, just take care of yourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I want to, I just have two things to share with you. One is that I participated in a virtual conference for water education for Latino leaders. It's called WELL. Now, in terms of Latino leaders, that can be of any ethnicity. It's just that anybody that's serving a Latino population, you are a Latino leader that needs to learn about water. Well, in the, the one day conference, several questions came up to me, for me regarding an expected mega drought. Also about 100-year plan for climate change and in regards to storm water management. So I submitted all these questions to our Public Works Director, Steve, and he in turn gave me satisfactory answers. So thank you, Steve. As a substitute, I participated for the first time in the Power Valley Safe Lives Committee. It is co-chaired by our Francisco and Dory from Salud para la Gente. And so as I participated or listened to mainly, it was interesting to hear the planning that goes out in terms of creating messaging to the different groups that we have here in Watsonville. Currently, the age group that has the most increase in COVID cases are from ages 20 to 34. So the committee is trying to decide how to improve their messaging to get, target this group so that they will begin to listen more. Also, they received data, a lot of data from the county regarding, regarding how or regarding the increase, the continuous increase of COVID cases here in, in Watsonville. However, one of the things that was not included in the, in the data was that there was no information given about farm workers. How many of the cases that we have here are related to farm workers? The county representative did not have that information, but he said he could research it and that he could present it to the committee at the next committee meeting. And I just noticed a zero, so I don't know when I ran out of time. I'm sorry if I went over my time. So moving on. Report out of closed session, our city attorney, a report out. Is he? Ellen, are you around?
Mayor, I think he's trying to turn off his, unmute himself. Give it one second.
I, I was not able to access the screen until a moment ago. Thank you, Mayor. I report my report out of closed session. There were two items discussed in closed session. One was a real estate matter and one was a series of labor negotiation matters. The council received a report on both items, but took no final action, no reportable final action. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, we are going to now have mayor's proclamation. Okay, I'm sorry for that delay. I'm trying to, although it's on silent, the phone keeps ringing and ringing and I don't know who's trying to call me right now, but anyway, proclamation. So this proclamation is for the International Day of Persons with Disability. And so I will read, and as you know, in proclamations, I have said it many times, there's a lot of whereas's, but I'm just going to read a few. So whereas the annual observance of International Day of Persons with Disabilities was instated in 1992 by the United Nations in an effort to promote the rights and wellbeing of disabled persons in all spheres of society. And whereas, whereas it is important to recognize that not all disabilities are immediately apparent, such as mental illness, chronic pain, sight or hearing impairments, learning differences and cognitive dysfunctions amongst other. And whereas our community is proud to have organizations and individuals to provide services and support to persons with disability, such as the Santa Cruz County Commission on Disabilities and its vice chair, Brenda Gutierrez Baeza. And whereas Vice Chair Baeza joined the commission in 2016 as a representative for the county's fourth district and is an enthusiastic, engaged participant in various outreach efforts in benefit of disabled persons. Now therefore I, Rebecca Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the state of California, on behalf of the city council hereby recognize December 3rd as International Day of Persons with Disabilities and Brenda Gutierrez Baeza, Vice Chair of the Santa Cruz County Commissions of Disabilities for her workforce accessibility and exclusivity in our community. And so with that proclamation, congratulations and is Brenda able to speak?
Yeah, hello. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be representing Watsonville for the Commission of Disabilities. It is amazing everything we can accomplish when we work as a team for the greater good of the community. When I first joined in 2016, I learned a lot from my friend and former commissioner, Felipe De Leon. She served this community so, so much during her life and I'm trying to continue her work as much as possible. I know we have come a long way from 1992 and I am so proud of how much our community is evolving and then into a more accessible and inclusive place and I'm so excited about our future. Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations to you and all the work that you've done to support those that are disabled and make the rest of us who are not aware of, of your needs. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us. Okay, moving on then. Our report to the council, first we have our manager's update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Give me one moment as I bring up my screen. Okay, thank you, Mayor and council and members of the community that are joining us tonight. It's hard to believe that this is my last update of 2020. It's been a very fast-paced, challenging and unpredictable year for all of us, as you're hearing from many of our council members this evening. And I know we have a lot of fun things on the agenda, so I'm going to try to keep my remarks short this evening. So for starters, what's really top of mind for all of us is the ongoing spike in really troubling trends around the prevalence of COVID-19, not just in Watsonville, but across Santa Cruz County, the state of California and really across our country. This past week, the governor announced a new state home order, which they're going to be applying across five regions throughout the state of California. Just today, the governor announced that they are activating those new restrictions in parts of Southern California. This week, several of the counties within the Bay Area decided to proactively apply those restrictions early within several areas of the Bay Area. Santa Cruz County at this point in time is still weighing that decision, but has not applied the new stay-at-home order to Santa Cruz County. But this is what the restrictions will mean if and when that occurs. Gathering outside your household unit will be prohibited, so no more of gathering within no more than three households or less. It would be no gathering whatsoever outside of your immediate household. It would also mean the temporary closure of bars, wineries, personal services, hair salons, indoor and outdoor playgrounds, movie theaters and others. It would allow for schools that have received waivers to remain open, as well as critical infrastructure, including things like city services, healthcare. A number of construction industries are included in that as well. Retail businesses can still open at 20% and restaurants unfortunately will have to move to takeout and delivery only. And we're very sensitive to the significant impact this is having on a number of our small businesses as these new restrictions roll out. So again, we're seeing some very troubling trends as our county reaches an all-time high with COVID cases since the beginning of the pandemic. As it stands today, we have about 5,176 cases year-to-date in Santa Cruz County. 1,154 active cases, which again is the most active cases we've had so far. And we are now, I believe, at about 50 deaths with a few more deaths that were just announced this evening. 2,730 cases in Watsonville. And as was mentioned earlier, we know that the vast majority of the spread and exposure is happening through gatherings on private time, at home with friends and family members. And that 18 to 34-year-olds represent the largest age group within that. And Watsonville, like many other communities, continues to be impacted disproportionately compared to others. Some good news, there's expanded testing capacity at Ramsey Park Family Center. They've doubled their capacity, now open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. You can access that testing site at the link on your screen. You can also find a number of testing resources on the county of Santa Cruz at santa cruz health.org forward slash testing. As Councilmember Estrada mentioned earlier, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We now have two valid vaccinations that are making their way through the pipeline. California will receive 327,000 doses of the Pfizer coronavirus vaccine by mid-December. County health officials are working with regional partners to establish a plan as we speak in terms of how that distribution will occur. The county health department will be following the California Department of Public Health guidelines as they do that. We already know that the first to receive the vaccine will include healthcare workers and long-term care residents, knowing how vulnerable, vulnerable they've been. And of course, we saw that very unfortunate incident at the Watsonville Post Acute Center that really underscores that. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel, but I also want to make very clear that we're not there yet. And it's especially important now more than ever that we don't let our guard down, we stay the course. As we move into the holiday season and Christmas, we know that pull together with family, but it is more dangerous now than it has been since the pandemic started and really just urge folks to be smart and careful about their holiday plans. We've also received a lot of questions and interest and concerns from community members around our homeless response efforts. It's really clear that the pandemic has resulted in an increase in the number of individuals seeking support and housing. We've been working with our county and our community partners to help connect these individuals with services. We obviously want to do that in a, in a humane and sympathetic way, knowing the difficult situation that many of these individuals are in. And at the, at the same time, we also want to ensure the continued health and safety of our community and these areas that have been most impacted. So our hope is over the coming weeks, we're working on some short-term plans to try to get these individuals housed to ensure that they're in safe living situations, as well as providing mental health and, and support services as well. And we're working with the Community Action Board as an example and Health and Human Services with the county and a number of other partners to help make that happen. So 2020 isn't over yet and we have two great opportunities for the community to get involved this month. On December 15th, we'll be holding another downtown Watsonville specific plan meeting and that starts at 5:50 PM. We're also going to be holding an ad hoc policing and social equity on December 16th at 5:30. We're really excited to kick that very important discussion off as we engage with our community on the topic of policing and social equity. It'll be an opportunity for the community to see who the ad hoc committee members are, who are at-large community members who volunteer for that effort and lots of opportunities over the coming year to be part of that process. I'm also again excited to announce that Santa Claus will be coming to town. It's actually starting tomorrow at 4:00 PM in District 1. I want to, I want to make clear that we have added safeguards to ensure safe social distancing as part of the event. And due to how unpredictable the last few days have been, our hope is that we'll be able to keep this event going. But if we need to make modifications or even potentially have to pull back or even cancel the event due to changing health code requirements, then we may have to do that, but we'll continue to keep you updated as we move forward. And as mentioned earlier this evening, as I wrap up my last update of the year, I wanted to take a moment to really thank outgoing Mayor Garcia. Your year as mayor has obviously didn't go as planned. 2020 was a year of profound and unexpected challenges around every turn. And I really appreciated your resiliency and patience as we navigated through one crisis after another, from pandemic to wildfires to economic challenges. So I just wanted to really thank you for your service to the community during these especially challenging times. Want to also take the opportunity to thank outgoing Mayor Pro Tem Coffin Gomez and outgoing Councilmember Hernandez for your many late nights. For your many late nights and hours serving the community over the last several years. I've really enjoyed working alongside you during my five years in Watsonville. And again, I thank you for your service and sacrifice over those years. And really just enjoyed working with all of you. Just wanted to put out thanks of gratitude.
Thank you, Matt. Before moving on in terms of allowing the council members and then the public. To make comments, ask questions. I'm going to take a break and the reason I'm going to take a break and I need Beatrice's support on this. Is the person that is going to be swearing in. Ari as the Mayor Pro Tem can only be with us for a very, very short time. And so I'm going to allow her to go ahead and do the swearing in right now. And then we'll proceed afterwards in response to Matt's report. So Beatrice, can you lead us on this?
Mayor, I believe county clerk is able to stay longer, so we could continue with this meeting. Until the time when Ari is supposed to be sworn in.
Oh, so she could stay, I mean, until we're ready for her?
That's what she said.
Oh, okay. Well, with that, then we'll just proceed in terms of. Asking Matt or making questions in terms to Matt's report. We'll start with our council members. So Aurelio, do you have any questions or comments for Matt?
No, I don't have any questions.
Lowell?
You're muted, Lowell.
Pardon me. Too many buttons to push. But we all know I can push buttons. Hey, let's make sure we get all these important events on our calendar. You know, some things kind of slip off for me and I'm. Trying to balance two or three different retiree projects simultaneously. And so if we can make sure that our calendars are up to date, I don't want to miss a lick. Thank you.
Okay, Ari?
No, I don't have any questions. Just the same comment Lowell does about calendaring all these wonderful events, especially since so many of them have turned virtual. But whether they're in person or virtual, it would just be really great. We'd like to be a part of that. And thank you for your report, Matt. Lot of detail to it, lot of information, and I know we're going to go into the holiday season positive. It's positive.
Thank you, Ari. Felipe?
My question was, you're talking about the report, Matt's report. Do you know if, I know that you guys met with the health officer, do you know if their plan is to do? You know, are they gonna differ from the state order? Or are they going to do verbatim what the state order is when they do come up with their press conference?
So I think the shorter answer, the short answer right now, Councilmember Hernandez, is we don't know yet. I think they're weighing all those options. They know how difficult these restrictions have been. On our region and especially small businesses and wanting to ensure whatever decision they make is data and science-based. And trying to do the least harm as possible while at the same time protecting public health and it's a hard balance to strike. I know they had some discussion about it today at their Board of Supervisors meeting, but no decision has been made yet and no details have been provided.
Okay. Francisco?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions.
Okay, so we will now ask the public, if the public has any comments. To make in terms of Matt's report, this is the time, please raise your hand and you will be recognized.
Mayor, I believe Councilwoman Kaufman Gomez wants to speak.
Okay.
Her hand.
Oh, I don't see her. Go ahead, go ahead, Trina, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. Your slideshow, I've been also clipping and putting this over on Facebook as we speak. And I think the big elephant in the room is, when is it going to happen to us? We know that we're really on the cusp of a lot of things happening and everybody is, has that same question in mind. So can we do something even on Nixle to get it out? Because you know, a lot of people do use that service in this community and it might be beneficial. If we can tap into that as a resource to notify the public, we're getting them for the surf, we're getting them for accidents. Can we use Nixle to also post any of the COVID updates in terms of closures or anything else? It might be helpful for our community to disseminate the information as quick as possible.
That is something we can explore. We usually use Nixle for imminent threats in emergencies and. Some communities have been using those types of platforms as the new orders roll out because they haven't taken effect here yet. We haven't used it for that purpose, but I would just urge the community to expect that it could happen any day. The county health officer can make a decision tomorrow. They've often been allowing a forty-day, forty-eight-hour implementation period, so there's some time to plan, but it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. It will occur.
Are those all your questions, Trina?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So now back to public comment. At this time, if you wish to make a comment regarding Matt's presentation, please raise your hand and you will be acknowledged.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, Matt, I would like to know if Santa, since he's going to be visiting all seven council manic districts. What route is he going to take? Is it going to be a drive-by? And is he going to throw Christmas masks to all the good seniors in District Seven, Ari?
I don't have the exact route in front of me, but they will be going through every neighborhood for each district over the next several days. It will be a drive-by, so it's going to be quick. No one's going to be lingering. It'll be socially distanced. With lots of precautions in place and there will be some goodies that they're planning to hand out. As things stand today, but again, if health orders change that, we'll have to adjust our plans.
Great, thank you. I've been a very good boy this year.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on. Anybody else want to?
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. This is my first time in a council meeting and I just have a couple of comments. I lived in, I live in District Four. And I walk the slew and Lowell had mentioned picking up trash. Could we have more waste baskets for people to put things in? There are not very many out there that may help. And maybe have a community day for cleanup, I think would help a lot. And then something more personal, I live in a neighborhood. And a couple of houses down from me, they have big parties with bands. What do I do about that? I don't want to call the police. I don't want to go knock on their door, but you're talking about, oh, people have to clean and they have to do this and they have to do that. How is that going to be enforced? What can I do to get my neighbors to be, use some common sense? And also what's Nixle? I don't know what that is. Is that like next door?
No, no.
Thank you for the questions. I appreciate those suggestions of helping to keep our slews clean. Adding receptacles is something that we could certainly explore. We do do cleanup days from time to time. And our utility crews sweep the area as well as our Watsonville Works program. But we're always open to suggestions. If you come across gatherings like that, we have been enforcing on those just about every weekend and we'll continue to. So those can be reported. You can find that number on our website and if you come across it, unfortunately, we will. We will send an officer out to enforce those violations.
Adamin, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good evening. I want to congratulate all the. Councilmembers that are leaving today and thank them for their service and I want to also thank Matt for. His support during all this calendar year, especially in the event of the COVID. And you know, for several months he had been keeping us and. Updating us about what is going on in the city and doing a very good job in informing the businesses. About what's going on and all the changes and all of that, and I really appreciate that. We've been at the Pajaros CDC, we've been very honored to work and collaborate with the city to. Support the businesses in accessing resources and relief. So thank you for all that work, Matt, and for the reporting today. And I also, when I, in that note of supporting businesses, I want to encourage the council. And all the public to continue supporting the local businesses. I know the city has been putting that out there and also give you the opportunity to. Be able to support our new pop-up store. We just. Open a pop-up store here on twenty-five East Beach for the kitchen incubator. So these are all products that are being made here in Watsonville that we're selling. We're going to be during, from three to seven PM on this Friday. And the following Friday, so it's Friday, the eleventh and Friday, the eighteenth, we're going to be selling products that are all made here in Watsonville. You can also order online. So twenty-five East Beach across the plaza from three to seven, so hopefully we can see many of you. And again, thanks, Matt, for your support to all of our businesses. And we look forward to continuing providing more support in the rest of the year and then in the new year right away in January. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carmen. Okay, moving on.
We have one more, one more speaker, Mayor.
Hi, I do have a few questions. My first question is, when we do get that order to shut down for the Bay Area. Or the beach is going to be closed? That's something that a lot of people have been asking me. Um, and. The public health official doesn't want to group us in with the rest of the Bay Area. Do you guys get to have a conversation with him and advocate for our community? Since we've been disproportionately affected by COVID. I feel like Watsonville should get a say in whether or not we get into this restriction because we're going to get it. We're going to get into it anyway, and I feel like the sooner we do it, the better it'll be for our community. So I don't know if that's something that you can do. I don't know how that works. I have a question on the Ramsey Park testing facility. Do you need an appointment after you've gone the first time? Because I was told months ago that you didn't, but recently it kind of seems like you do. So do you need an appointment if it's not your first appointment to the Ramsey Park? Also, I appreciate the community members because I also don't know what Nixle is. And I agree, support local. I saw that there was something on the agenda about possibly another subway. And I, it's just, I don't feel like we need any more of that type. We have so much local talent. And then speaking of that, I know that local businesses have submitted applications for the city and never heard back. So Matt, if you could just kind of give me a little, like literally like a tiny email on what it, what that means, like maybe they're doing it wrong and that's why they're not hearing back from you. But they've been, they've reached out to me and they told me that they went through the process and then at one point just never heard back. And then also about ensuring impacted areas that are properly cleaned and maintained. I know that the levee was cleaned, but it was also destroyed a lot of people's like homes that they had set up. So I don't know if in the future, you guys can go ahead and do these type of cleanups without forcing everybody out of where they are housing themselves. I understand the public's concern, but this is also our public. They are also our community and they have built. Different things that work for them throughout the years and you guys just come in at the end, at the end of the year of this year. And you tell them, take your stuff out because we're coming in and we're cleaning everything up. And I, I just, I find it insensitive at this time, and if there's something that could be done better. In the future, I would really appreciate it. But yeah, if you could answer those questions for me, please, especially the Ramsey Park one appointment. A lot of people have been asking me about that one. And oh, if we could get better pictures of the districts because nobody knows what district they're in, but they're very excited about the Santa Claus. And I want to warn you all that like community is really excited about Santa Claus like they were with the cops and that got out of hand because it was so much people. So people are really excited about this, but they also want better pictures on the website because they don't know what the district is.
Thank you, Ellie.
Mayor, I could respond to Ellie's questions here pretty quickly. It's our understanding that the new order will not include closure of beaches. We do not expect that to come as those new restrictions roll out. Dr. Gail Newell, our county health officer, has been very successful. We have regular communications and conversations with her. As she's trying to make the best decision she can for the entire county, including Watsonville. And so we, you know, we continue to participate in those. These are tough decisions to make. And, and at the same time, we need to ensure that we're representing the interests. Of our community, given how Watsonville's been disproportionately impacted. So we continue to make that position very clear. I, when it comes to the testing site at Ramsey, it does require an appointment now. It's your original patient ID that was established when you first, if you've already been tested at the site, you can log into the same portal. Use that same patient ID, but it does not allow walk-up. You do have to have a, an appointment before you show up. The cleanups that we've been doing around the slews, particularly, particularly around the homeless populations. Is really being done for their own safety. Those areas are within the floodplain and as we move into the winter, it's often that those areas do get flooded. So it's not a safe place for those individuals to be. And that work is really intended in trying to relocate them to a safe location. I know it can be disruptive, but it really is about safety. And then lastly, we do have several good detailed maps of the districts on our website. We can make sure that those are available as part of the materials we advertise around the Santa Neighborhood visits. And we do expect a strong response. We know there's a lot of excitement, so we're going to try our best to run those as smoothly as we can.
Thank you, Matt, for responding to Ellie's questions. Are there any other speakers?
Mayor, no, there are no other speakers. I just want to say that if some members of the public have already spoken on an item. I'm not able to bring them back in to speak, so that's the reason why I keep lowering people who've already spoken. I lower their hands. So I just want to make sure that people are aware why that's happening because I have some repeat speakers.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for, thank you for explaining that tomorrow. So if we're done with the public input, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is consent agenda. And to begin with, this is an opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to speak on a consent agenda item. This is your time to speak. So is there anybody that would like to address the council on a consent agenda item? Please raise your hand.
Go ahead, Ellie.
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look through the agenda. Are we voting on the Porter Building today? Because I don't see it.
No, it's not on the agenda for today, and I'm glad that you asked for it. So the community knows. It's been postponed. The decision on the Porter Building has been postponed. Because we're giving each applicant enough time to submit all that is needed in terms of financial data. Because we need that data. So once that's completed and we're expecting it'll be completed soon. And it can be reported to us in January, so it won't be until January.
Does that mean that, for example, Trina and Felipe aren't going to vote on it anymore then, since they won't be here?
That's right. The two new council members will vote on it.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I don't have any more questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the consent item?
Efrain, go ahead. Efrain, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is Efrain. I like to speak on consent item I. For the use of River Park for a community garden. I just kind of want to show my support for this item. I've been part of the community garden for the past year and it's been an anchor for me. think in general, community gardens kind of provide that space for, for us to like, remain stable in the midst of crisis. And I would love for this item to be approved. And yeah, I really appreciate the council for undertaking this and making sure that they continue, you know, their mission for community gardens, for people to have that space to grow food. Thank you.
Thank you, Efrain. Is there anybody else?
I don't see any other hands up, Mayor, that close this public coming.
Okay, so we'll move on then and bring it to the council. So at this time, unless somebody wants to pull an item off the agenda.
You can't, yeah, Madam Mayor, you can't see me. I'm sorry, I got kicked out for twice already. But I'd like to pull item M for discussion.
Okay, I, item M, and what is that one on?
That is on the business license, excuse me, fees and licenses.
Oh, okay. Okay. Is there Lowell?
Just a, just a couple of quick questions. Rebecca, item number B, our local appointments, you can, the public can see that there are vacancies there, and we'd really like to fill them. And so I'm just urging the public to take a look at item B, and look at our boards and commissions, and think about what interests you and what, what calls to your heart. I need a library trustee, and I haven't been able to find one. And you don't have to live in my district, you just have to be a registered voter within the city limits. And that, that applies to all these other vacancies, and we have several vacancies. And so I'm just urging the public to take a look there and help us out and participate as fully as you can and, and find your passion. In regards to item number C, that's $611,000 and 500 bucks for.
Lowell, I'm going to interrupt you because at this time, I was asking if any items wanted to be pulled off the agenda.
Oh, I just had comments.
Okay, so you can do that when we had, talk about the motion, okay?
Oh, sure.
Again, there's been an, item M has been pulled. Is, are there any other items to be pulled? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Someone make motion?
I, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, sand M.
Second. I don't know who seconded.
Felipe.
Okay. Are there any further, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Yes, Mayor. Just back to the, the appointments and boards and committees, I do want to reiterate that the public can make an application for any of these. And I think it's kind of a generic application. And we could get a lot more public participation on these boards if we, if we got more public participation, and that would be really nice. In regards to item C, that's the $611,000 and 500 bucks for the sand filter roof structure at Cora Lidos. This does trigger the PLA agreement, the, what does that stand for? The?
Project Labor Agreement.
Project Labor Agreement. Am I correct?
Correct.
Oh, good. Just another comment on item I, the community garden, agroecology. You know, I got to teach agroecology before they taught, called it agroecology. They called it landscape and gardening and ag science. And so I want to be very supportive of this issue. And I want to thank Mesa Verde so much for their great work. And we look forward to agroecology's great work too, with our connection to the university. And that's what we really do need to do is connect to the university. And just one of the, the last things that I had to say, well, I guess I did say it. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Lowell. Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? I actually have a couple of questions. My first question is in regards to item I. And under, under CAN, C A N, Tierra Milperas will be in charge of Mesa Verde Gardens now. I need more information about Tierra Milperas. Because, for example, what kind of experience, what is their experience with community gardens? What locations have they managed in the past? Who are their lead? Just any kind of information so that I can feel confident that they will do as good a job as Mesa Verde Gardens.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and the Calabacca Parks and Community Services Director for the City of Watsonville. Be happy to answer your, your question. So Tierras Milperas is made up of many of the gardeners that were originally part of Mesa Verde Gardens. Mesa Verde Gardens as an organization has, has kind of gone into hibernation or isn't as active as, at all really. And so they have kind of turned all of the gardens that they were previously managing over to this new organization called Tierras Milperas under the fiscal sponsorship of CAND or Community Agroecology Network. And again, that new organization is, is made up and consists of many of the gardeners that have been part of the Mesa Verde organization and have used gardens under Mesa Verde for many, many years.
Oh, well, that's good to know. Yeah, that feels good. Okay, so thank you. Second question I have has to do with O, and it's about parklets. So if Santa Cruz County goes into the new stay-at-home order, which no outdoor dining, are, are we still going to be moving forward with the parklets?
Mayor Garcia, the plan, the short answer is yes. They may be temporarily prohibited under the health order, but long-term, we think it's a good investment. And so this will establish the program. When we're able to implement it, we'll really be subject to what happens with the new stay-at-home order in the future. So at this point, we're kind of waiting to see when, when it will take effect in the county over the next few days, and then we'll be adjusting our plans accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other further questions on this motion?
Just another quick statement, if I could be indulged, Mayor. Regarding, regarding the, the gardening major I, you know, on one of the gardens listed is on Airport Boulevard, the United Methodist, that hasn't been a garden since the, the church's, the property's been cleared out and it's scheduled for housing. And so, don't go looking for a garden there yet, but it, but it'd be nice if, if the housing project could incorporate a garden in some way. And also, I wanted to give a shout out to the, to the Environmental Science Workshop. I remember when my friend Kurt worked there and did so much great work. And we got great management there now too. And, and for them to be able to get a $5,000 grant from the Save the Redwoods League and also receive cooperation with the school district for the toolkits that they're providing. This is, this is important educational work that goes on in the community. And so they, they should get some recognition on that too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. Any further discussion on this motion?
Trina has her hand up.
Oh, who?
Trina.
Oh. Mayor, I'd like to just provide some clarity to Lowell's comment. And that, yeah, I don't even know how much longer I can withstand because this thing keeps going in and out on me. Just to clarify what Lowell was talking about, it's the First United Methodist Church that's on Stanford for the gardens, and not the airport where they sold off that property years ago.
Thank you for that clarification. Now, it's time for a roll call, please.
Hi.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
First?
Yes.
Montesino? I'm sorry. I have the wrong one.
Getting ahead of yourself.
I know. Let me start over again. Copeland Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia.
Okay, moving on to 8A, which is item M. Ari, you go ahead and speak about it.
Thank you. I'm sorry I can't put my picture on because I've just been kicked out twice every time I put my picture on. So I'm afraid to do it during this particular thing. So I'm talking about this because I think this is a wonderful example of what we should be doing to support small business during this pandemic. I think it, it is a, it's a great service. It's one of those things that helps people to survive what we were talking about earlier. And, and the council, speaking to my fellow council, current ones, as well as my future fellow council members, this should be, we should be looking to do more to support small businesses here in Watsonville, especially ones that are in compliance and are really struggling, and they're trying to pay their business, you know, license fees. And, and, and the pandemic during this year has just been such a struggle for them. So I wanted to pull it to highlight it, that I think this is a great way to start, but we need to do more for this as well. And I thank you for your time on that. Yes.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve this?
Yes, and then we can have a short discussion. I don't know if anybody else has a commentary on it. I'd like to make, you want me to make the motion first?
Make the motion, and then we need to.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item M.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ellie, you seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, Ari is absolutely right. We have a lot of folks that either forgot about the business license process, or maybe didn't know how to do it, or maybe, you know, got bogged down and kind of forgot about renewing it. And so this is an opportunity for us to stimulate local business. I see all these business announcements in the newspaper, and, and a lot of them are home-owned businesses. Some of them, you kind of wonder how they're gonna operate out of their house, you're like a tow yard or a construction company or something like that. But I think that we, this was an opportunity to highlight our, our forgiveness of folks that maybe just don't know how to go through the process, and maybe they need some guidance and some coaching, and, and maybe a little forgiveness is okay. There, there's sometimes when you run late on a bill, or you don't get all your paperwork done, and you, and you've got to go back and redo something. Let's, let's give people a break in whatever way we can, but let's get them to abide by the rules and regulations as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. Is there anybody else? Trina?
Seeing as I'm the business owner of the council, I also support this initiative because I know how difficult it has been for myself as well as other business partners within the commercial buildings that I've been in. And the other emphasis on this too is looking at the utility bills that are given to the landlords when the tenant isn't paying, and they have to leave the premises because they're either behind on rent or something happens there. That was something that was discussed several months back, and we haven't brought it back to council for discussion, about reminding the owners of the utility bill that they may be left with. So that should also be part of this conversation to help because in some aspect, they are contributing to this community, and they are a small business owner if they are bringing in a tenant for, as their source of income for, for a business ownership. And you're right, Lowell, we do need to do more with little to help support the local businesses that are here. It's very difficult. I know that we're getting a lot more online businesses here. Maybe, maybe there's something that we can do through the Alvaro CDC to post or allow people to post some things that they're doing, that they're selling, so that we can have a, maybe a local web source. So let's, let's see what else we can do. Let's come up creatively to help the local businesses. I know that the city's aspect is to help them, if there's any late fees with their licensure, maybe there's other things that can be done in terms of our incubator and, and/or our chamber. I know that maybe they're not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, but the Chamber of Commerce and agriculture is the hub of the community business. And we need to make sure that they're engaged in the process of whatever we can do to help the businesses locally here survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll have roll call.
Copeland Gomez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yeah. Okay, we have finished now all consent agenda items, and we're on to new business. And this is the time where we're going to be saying our farewells and doing our welcoming. My question is, do we need to wait to make sure that our two new city council members are on?
They're already on.
They are already on? Very, very good. Okay. And, and so, because you say they're already on, I should be able to see them?
No, we haven't promoted them to panelists yet until we're ready for that.
Okay. So with that, with our first order of business, we have presentations, a plaque of appreciation about Mayor Protem Kaufman Gomez and Council Member Hernandez. And we do have to give all respects and a big thank you to our Mayor Protem and to our former Mayor Felipe. Their service to the district and to the city will always be appreciated. I would ask Trina and Felipe if you will show your plaques that you received. It was a plaque of appreciation that appreciated each one of them, and it listed all council members, I think if I remember correctly. And so, Trina, you can't find your plaque? Okay. What, what about you, Felipe? Yeah. You have your plaque. Okay. So why at this time, since we already have you on the floor, would you like to share some last words, Felipe?
Yes. You know, well, first of all, you know, thank you. I want to thank, you know, the current council here. You know, I think even during this pandemic, we did accomplish a lot. And I think that, you know, over the course of the four years and, and even prior to that, we're able to accomplish a lot during those last eight years even. You know, I do remember back in 2012, when, you know, our, our general fund was like under 40,000, I mean, 40 million. And, you know, I know this March, it was significantly more. And I know that, you know, it saved us during this pandemic, I think, to a certain extent. You know, a lot, you know, we didn't have a lot of the revenue back then that we, to build some of the park infrastructure, or some of the bike and pedestrian infrastructure that, that we wanted to back then, you know. So I want to thank the council for all their, all their hard work to be able to do that. I want to thank also all of, not just my commissioners, but I do want to thank my commissioners, but also all your guys' commissioners for all their hard work, you know, on parks commissioners, planning commissioners, library commissioners, you know, personnel commissioners, all of them, because, you know, that's a commitment. It takes time, commitment from their busy days to do all that work and, and to make sure that, that the city runs. to do all that work and, and to make sure that, that the city runs smoothly and that the decisions that need to be made, and sometimes difficult decisions are made. So I want to thank you guys too, you know, for, for being committed to the city. You know, we accomplished a lot, you know, everything from, you know, job creation. Of course, bike and pedestrian, I'm going to say it again, bike and pedestrian safe infrastructure, you know, that was something that was always near and dear to me, economic development, you know, protect small businesses, encourage new diverse businesses, you know, creating the tat, the, the cannabis ordinance, you know. Sometimes it's difficult things that take a long time. The TOT tag, increasing the TOT tax was something else. And now, you know, we're going to be able, we're going to be in a place where we're going to have two new businesses that's going to create TOT, affordable housing, parks, you know, I was excited about Muzyo going up, Callahan. We got to see Callahan get refurbished, Muzyo refurbished, one of the pocket parks here in the district. Two pocket parks, Marinovich and the one on Kearney. So I'm really excited about those small, you know, things. The pump track, of course, the skate park, bunch of youth opportunities, the downtown revitalization, and just, you know, a better quality of life for all residents. You know, I've been super excited and glad to be part of the city council. And most excited to build memories of Watsonville for people, to build memories of Watsonville in a positive light. And we need to create those community building opportunities and expand the narrative of Watsonville. And I want to continue to make Watsonville a better place to live, work, and play. And, you know, I'll be right across the plaza there. And as my new role is Cabrio College trustee, you know, I, I might add a better place to get an education as well. So thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council. And thank all of your commissioners as well.
Well, thank you Felipe to you for all these years of service and your commitment of always being an activist for the betterment of our people, not only just in your district, but citywide. So thank you to you. Okay, Trina, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, my 180 seconds here. Let's see. There are many boards that I've been able to participate in to, to really represent this community. And for the faith and effort that the board is, or the council has allowed me to do so, it was a huge learning curve. It was also making sure that we have the voice of recognition and representation that the South County has been missed frequently in some of the, the different big decisions being made. We made it through Measure G. We made it through Measure Y. We made it through Measure D. We have worked at the community and fellow council members and, and the commissioners that have worked with me. This is 12 years of my service that I've provided to this community. Felipe, I think that is probably at least what you put in as well. We started as commissioners. That's why it's really important to follow Lo's message and to help bring in more commissioners who are then the leaders in the future in terms of their districts in, in getting to the voters. We have had a lot of challenges and accomplishments. COVID is, of course, the, the one here. Housing, we still have a tremendous way to go with housing that's here. Our public safety, we, we have, our crime rate has done a tremendous job of reducing since we've been on council this year. A lot has stepped up in terms of our economy, really bringing together everybody. We all come from different diversities and we're looking for that common ground of what we do, what we can agree on and work from there. We brought in Vision Zero, which I think Felipe alluded to, the Climate Action Plan that we've done here. I'm a founding board member of the Centricost Community Energy. That is going to be a tremendous resource to this community that will help all aspects of life and in our environment. So I think that that's really important on, one of the big contributions that was here. Working through the litigation, we've had litigation before we got here with the airport and resolving some of those issues. I think that was a pretty big deal for us. Working alongside of the, the Chamber of Commerce, we didn't have a joint meeting for, for years. And I think that those relationships that we needed to foster were very significant. The police ride-alongs, the police ride-along, the fire department ride-along, I even swept the streets in a street sweeper, as well as showing up at six o'clock in the morning to go out with the trash collector to understand what their needs are for the resources for our public that we need here. National Night Out has been awesome. That's how you get to know who we are as neighbors and we've really missed that this year. Arts in our community, I will leave it with arts in the community is the next crux that we need in this community to move forward, especially being as creative that we, we have here for the resources and what it can contribute to this community. So I hope that the next step will be bringing more of that in and, and that we see the body of this council to support those efforts for our community that are here. There, thank you very much for being our mayor this year, especially through this time of crisis and COVID. And we will, you know, also see a lot more changes as we come along here. I just wanted to say again, you know, thank you for all of that. My, my list is still going to continue. I will have somebody inherit the list of the to be continued for many of the council members that are there. And again, thank you all, council, for working collectively here to make our community a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you to you, Trina, for your many years of service and your commitment to the, to our community. So thank you so much. Okay, moving on, it says, oh, I guess Trina is going to present me a gavel.
I guess we can go virtual with that gavel since I believe that you have it at home. Maybe you can show the, our community what it is that you've achieved for your accomplishment this year. So raise it up.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Let's see.
Wonderful, wonderful. So to a plaque to honor our mayor for all of the service that she's provided to our community through Zoom. You know, this is ironic that we are dealing a Zoom mayor here. Maybe that'll be her next logo that's on there, or if it isn't, it should be a chip on there that says Zoom mayor. So again, thank you very much for your patience, your resilience, your able, your ability to get people together in consensus and interest and to work through a lot of things that have been difficult and complex this year. So for that, I honor you as, as our echoing mayor for all of the work and effort that you've provided to our community here. And I'm certain there may be a few more words from our council as well for that. So thank you again for all of that that you've given us.
Thank you for, thank you for those kind words, you know. It means a lot to me, being mayor and being acknowledged by my peers on the city council that in fact, yes, I as mayor work as Trina said, collectively. We all work collectively to, to, to make things happen for Watsonville. So it appears then, so, and this is such a beautiful, beautiful thing. What you don't know or didn't see is when I called the meeting to order, I used this actually. So it comes apart, so I'll be able to use it should I decide to be chair of other boards or commissions. I get to say a few words now. And I, I do, I do want to just share in terms of how much I appreciate having been your mayor. For those of you who read the Sentinel or the Paheronian, you may have read my monthly articles on the work and accomplishments the city has attained during this pandemic. Originally, I was going to read my last article with you to share my experience as mayor this year, but it was going to be, take more than three minutes allotted to me. So I say to you, if you haven't read the article, go to the Sentinel a week ago Sunday and last Friday for the Paheronian. Tonight, what I'm going to do instead is I want to begin by giving some thank yous and then I will share two accomplishments I did achieve. My first thank you goes out to our city manager, Matt. Matt was in constant communication with me right from the onset of the pandemic up to just this morning, actually. Always wanting to hear what I'm thinking in terms of the decisions he was having to make. And most of the time, we were on the same page. However, once in a while, when he asked my opinion, he wasn't very receptive of that opinion. And me being who I am, I sometimes get overly assertive and I tried to get overly assertive to, with Matt for him to agree with my opinion. Well, it didn't always happen, but what I do want to say and why I want to say thank you, Matt, is you continue to listen to me and you continue to respect me. And I do appreciate that so much. So thank you, Matt, for supporting me in my role as mayor. I want to thank those council members who recognized me as their peer as mayor. Many of you called me, emailed me, even text me to share concerns, to ask questions and to even make recommendations. And again, we did work collectively to do the best that we could for Watsonville. So I thank you, council members. I also want to thank staff on two levels. Whenever I wanted a proclamation, when I wanted a resolution or even the moratorium, it was the staff that had to do the research to make it happen. And so if it wasn't for the staff, we would not be able to give you the actions that need to be taken. And so I say thank you to staff. And on the second level, as I mentioned earlier, I wrote an article every month and mainly about all of our, the fine work our departments were doing. And it was the directors of each of the department that gave me all the information necessary so that I could do the writing that I did. So thank you, staff. I especially, especially want to thank the community. Because daily, I mean daily, you would email me, you would call me, you would sometimes even text me to share your concerns, to ask your questions, to give recommendations. It was you, the community, that kept me abreast of what was the need of the community. And as a result, tried to respond the best that I could to those needs. And so I say thank you so much for the community. I especially, I especially want to give a thank you to my daughter, my son-in-law, my grandchildren, my son, my daughter-in-law and my granddaughter. Because they always stood by my side. I could reach out to them to share what I was feeling, what I was thinking, what I was wanting to answer. They were there to give me love. They were there to listen to me. So mi haga y mi ho, I thank you so much. And my grandchildren, they were so special to me. They really always wanting to talk to abuela about whatever they wanted to talk about and, but also had question to me, for me in regards to the city. So thank you, mi hoss y mi hoss. In regards to my mayor experience, I identified four goals I wanted to accomplish in hopes that this would create a stronger community. Those goals were to create a health in all policy ordinance, address rental housing, improve our climate action plan and support local artists. Unfortunately, COVID-19 had an impact on me reaching those goals. In addition, there was also social justice unrest. I may not have completely reached these goals, but unexpected opportunities occurred that I hope will resolve in a more unified community. Two opportunities occurred that I never imagined. So soon after the initial shelter in place went into effect in March, I heard that the cities of the Bay Area were passing moratoriums to prevent housing evictions. I thought, if they can do it, why can't Watsonville do it? So I immediately spoke to our city manager and said, I want an emergency meeting to adopt an eviction moratorium. I am pleased to say Watsonville became the first city in the county to accomplish this protection for our winters. When George Floyd was murdered and Black Lives Matters movement began, we had two peaceful protests in Watsonville. However, I knew there was some concern about police service and social equity in the community because of the many, many emails I was receiving. I immediately asked to meet with our city manager and our police chief to talk about the need to have community forums about policing and social justice. Councilmembers started to join me in that conversation. And as, and in our conversation, we decided to have an ad hoc committee and involve COPA in obtaining input on this issue. We have selected 12 diverse community members to the ad hoc committee and have hired neutral facilitators to lead the meetings. Our first meeting will be on December 16th at 5:30 PM and I invite all of you to participate. I'm pleased that I'm able to address these two issues as mayor to support our community. My year as mayor has been challenging, but I am grateful for the support I have received in the community, staff, administration, council members and my family. I want to sincerely thank all of you for allowing me to be your mayor for this year. Be safe, take care, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you. So moving on, we're going to start our, thank you. Moving on, we're going to start with our oath of offices. And the first one we're going to start with is, as I had said before, the person who is going to swear in, Ari, is here. My, Gail.
There.
Yes.
Can we keep the, the order as it is? Gail is now able to stay until that time.
Oh, okay. So thank you, Gail, for hanging there for with us. Okay, so first, we're going to have oath of office administered by Alicia Montesino to newly elected city council member Eduardo Montesino. So Alicia and Eduardo, are you there?
Welcome, Eduardo.
I, I see Eduardo is on, but I don't see this, is he, has he been welcomed? Because I don't see a picture or, and he's muted.
Welcome back, Eduardo.
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Now we can see. Okay, so you want to go ahead and proceed with the oath? Or you're muted?
Can you hear me? No, we can't hear.
Okay, now, now you're unmuted. Now we can, okay. So I'm asking you, Alicia will want to proceed with the oath.
Yeah. Okay, Eduardo, raise your right hand. Okay. And say after me, please. I, Eduardo Montesino.
I, Eduardo Montesino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
In alliances to the Constitution of the United States.
And alliance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well, well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
All right, congratulations, Eduardo.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and you'll be able to say a few words in a few minutes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have oath of office administered by city clerk Vazquez Flores to newly elected city council member Aurelio Gonzalez.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I. I, state your name. You're muted.
I, Aurelio Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will.
Bear true faith.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties that I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All that you were re-elected and can continue with us. Okay, we're going to now oath of office administered by Santa Cruz County Clerk Telleran to Ari Parker as mayor pro tem. Well, wait, do I have to stand up like Aurelio? Now I have to hold my computer. Thanks Aurelio. Set the standard.
I think it's nice for you to stand up.
I'm up. Computer in one hand, hand up in the other.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ari Parker.
I, Ari Parker.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you for the honor of clearing you in.
Thank you, Gail. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations to our new mayor pro tem. Welcome. Okay, moving on now, oath of office administered by Santa Cruz Superior Court Judge Galgriati to Jimmy Dutra as council member and mayor. So do we have our mayor, mayor and judge?
Give it, give it one moment, Rebecca. I believe that Beatrice is actually going to be doing the swearing in.
Oh. I didn't know that had happened. So I don't, I don't see Jimmy on, is Jimmy around?
I think they're setting it up as we speak. I see Beatrice coming on the screen.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'll see. And Jimmy's coming on screen now as well.
Oh, yeah, now I see. Oh, okay, now I see you. You're in the chamber. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Welcome, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Jimmy Dutra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's good to be back, everybody. I will, I will be back in about 10 minutes to address you all. So everybody on Zoom, hang tight and it's good to be home.
Welcome back, welcome back. Okay, so now we're going to have comments from our new mayor pro tem, Ari.
Okay, I'll make mine short. And I do want to talk a little bit about the wonderful lady who just swore me in. Gail Telleran has been serving the people of Santa Cruz for over almost three decades. You know, and she's retiring as of December 31st. And I want to say she is not only well-regarded in the, in Santa Cruz County by safeguarding the integrity of our elections, but she is well-regarded for her decades of leadership across the state of California. And I, I hope she's not gone forever. I hope it's just a time for this next year. But I, I hope she continues and maybe we'll have a woman elected from the county of Santa Cruz into the state elections. It would be nice to see. And I also would like to say so many mayor pro tems have gone before me. So many people with different viewpoints in life, with different experiences of growing up in Watsonville. But we do all have one common thing is that this is Watsonville, this is our home, and we want to make it better. I want to echo what Mayor Felipe said, and he will always be known as that in my heart, is that, you know, we just want to make it better. We want to, we, our staff and the council strive every day to make it better. And I know even if we get into a little contentious issues in city council meetings, we're all striving to make it better. So let's, let's keep the conversation going, but let's listen to each other too and hear what we're saying. And I know that we're going to have a good year of leadership and, and the pandemic, as it closes down, hopefully during this year, we look forward to a bright and shining future as we limp along until we get there. But I, I'm here for the long run and I want to thank all of our outgoing council members who've taught me so much and all of the council members who are here and will continue. Welcome, council member Eduardo Montesino. So nice. I've heard such wonderful things about you. I'm looking forward to working with you. And, and Jimmy Dutra, who is back and he's in our leadership role as mayor. So I think it's going to be a great year. I want to thank staff for all that they do for us. As Mayor Rebecca said, so emotionally, it's true. Without, without us all working together, we would get nothing done. So as we move forward, thank you so much and thank you, Watsonville. Because we wouldn't be here without you. Thank you.
That's true, that's true, Ari. Okay, moving on, we're now going to have comments from new council member Montesino and returning council member Gonzalez. So Eduardo, you want to go ahead and go first?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to thank my, my wife and wonderful kids who supported me in my run again. You know, to running for the city council. Thank, one, a lot of thank yous to each and everyone that voted for me in my district. And thank the overall community for their supportive encouragement. I really want to work for our community, the Watsonville community. I want to thank my, my predecessor, former mayor Felipe Hernandez for his support and also thank the Pajaro Valley Unified School, the district trustee, Daniel Doggs Jr., for his encouragement and support in these trying times. Also want to thank all of us. You know, just want to talk about a little bit of, you know, what got me here. The last time that I got sworn in, it was in the chambers. It was a festive event, but my, my kids were, at that time, I had nine, nine, a year-old daughter in my, in my hand. Now she's 11 years old. And my other daughter that was, that was five years old and now she's 11. And my son was 10 years old and now he's a full-grown man, a 20-year-old. For their, you know, achievements and support in this community. We moved here in, you know, 2000s to this wonderful community. And they, we've raised these three young, young kids. And, you know, we want to give back, all of us, my, my whole family want to give something back to our community. That's why I'm running again. You know, it's going to be a lot of emphasis in working with, you know, you know, now former mayor Rebecca Garcia, you know, Aurelio, Ari Parker, Lohers, you know, family friend. The new mayor, Jimmy Dutra. You know, we want to work and encourage all of us to work together in these trying times to help the community out of this, you know, pandemic. Also want to just thank and, and want to, you know, following up with some of my priorities, hopefully for the coming years is, you know, with, with, you know, Ramsey Park as an official turf and, and lights. Hopefully we'll work on the planning department so we can make it easier for, as you talked about in your other comments, a few council members about how to make, facilitate and help our business community. And also, you know, help the housing. Because we do have a housing crisis in our community. A lot of people are being, you know, moved out or, you know, because of all the high prices and we're being pushed out of our community. So really want to work on that. But just, you know, overall, just hopefully we can get out of this pandemic and work with all of you guys. So thank you. Those will be my comments.
And, and welcome, Eduardo. We're glad to have you. Okay, council member Aurelio.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to take this moment to, first of all, thank everybody that helped me get re-elected. It's always a challenge when you run a campaign. Also, I'd like to thank Felipe Hernandez, Trina Kaufman for their support on these two last years. For me, I joined a council that was moving fast and I had to be able to jump aboard and move along with them. And Trina and Lowell and Rebecca and everybody on the council has assisted me in doing that. And staff also, I thank staff for their support and trying to get all these projects accomplished. In the last two years, we've accomplished a lot. One of my goals originally when I ran was to create more housing, which we've done. And also, you know, the emphasis of youth. Youth is important. Youth is the future of Watsonville. And we need to look out for the benefit of them. And so I'm saying that it's important that we create mass transit that is better utilized for our community and serves our community in a better fashion. So there's a lot of things that needs to be done still and we need to continue to work for more homeless. As in District 2, we have two homeless shelters that are greatly impacting District 2. And we need to figure out how do we house these in a humane way? Because living in a levee and creating your own house is not a decent way to live. And so we need to address all these issues. I thank the mayor for staying in there with the pandemic. I know she had some really stressful moments in, in life. But, but I think with the support as a council and as we work together as a unit, I think it's the most important thing that we can do for our community. Put our differences aside and look what better benefits the community overall. I'd like to thank my, my wife, she is not here at the moment because she had to go take care of her parents. They're up in age, so it's really important to watch over our families. My kids, I'd like to thank my kids to support me. And everybody else in the community that has supported me in this venture of mine, of life. You know, there's, there's a lot to do for our community. I encourage people to apply for the commissions. We need to get involved. I got involved many years ago through the school site. School site city council, Lowell remembers me there. I was pushing buttons there. And I continued on. I did 12 years at the Housing Authority. And we did some really good work there. And then I did four years at the Planning Commission. So, you know, the commissions are really important and it's a good way and it's a good tool to use to learn how to maneuver through this bureaucratic system, because sometimes it's very frustrating. Sometimes things that we want to get accomplished seem to be a little bit more difficult. But once you start learning how to, how to move these things around, we can get these things done. And I think we really need to focus on our youth and our housing. And of course, economic development for our community, for our business people make planning a lot easier. So with that, I thank you folks and I look forward for the next four years pushing them buttons.
There'll be a lot of buttons to push. Okay, moving on now, we have comments from our new mayor, Jimmy Dutra. Jimmy?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Watsonville. Mayor Garcia, city council members and employees, supporters, friends, family, and a big shout out to my Pajaro Panthers. I'm deeply honored by tonight's historic victory that you, the community bestowed upon me to become your next mayor and District 6 representative. Your trust in me to lead our wonderful city brings me great joy and great responsibility. As a son of Watsonville, of Mexican and Portuguese descent, I find it humbling that I am able to serve our community, which has given me so much. Who would have guessed? A little boy who attended EA Hall Middle School, who once ran for class office, would once be able to be the next, I guess, mayor in his lifetime. Looking back on my youth, I can say that I've been preparing for this moment of service since I was a kid. My whole life, I have wanted to help people. I have felt the sense of duty for not only the people around me, but for the ones that I love. There is no doubt in my mind that working together as one community, we will overcome the issues that are facing us. I know that I am entering during a time of uncertainty and a time of stress and anxiety for so many of us. Just today, the Santa Cruz Sentinel had an article stating, that we are most likely going back into lockdown, probably at the end of the week. This isn't easy for any of us. In fact, it's crushing. We are faced with jobs being lost, a devastating blow to our local economy, food insecurity at its highest, and mental health issues being tested daily. And that's just a start. I commit to being an outlet to help ease all of our concerns and problems that arise out of these difficult times. I am determined to get our city back on track and take it beyond where we left off. We are not a city of mediocrity. We are a city that pushes forward and sets new norms, while at the same time preserving the very fibers that makes us Watsonville. My goal is to get us back into the city chambers on Main Street as soon as it is safe to do so. Until then, please know, we will continue to work hard for all of you. I will continue to be a pillar for our brick and mortars and give them the appreciation and support they deserve for being one of the biggest financial backbones to our local economy. So many of us have faced hardships lately. I want you to know that I am here for you. As your next mayor, I will continue to work for all of us, no matter your ethnic background, your religion, your gender identity, your sexual orientation, your immigration status, your economic status or your political views. We may not always agree on some of the issues, but I'm sure if we open our minds and our hearts, we will be able to find meaningful and impactful solutions. Today is a historical day, as I become the first openly gay mayor for our city. Today is a historical day as I become the first openly gay mayor for our city. Some may wonder, why is that important? For numerous years, the LGBTQ community has not been seen as equal. In fact, we have been seen as less than human. It has only been in recent years that the LGBTQ community has stepped up into some parts of this country as being equal partners. In some states today, LGBTQ people can be denied housing, employment, and the right to equal protection. So for me to be here as your mayor speaks volumes. It says our community has moved forward and is looking at the merit of the individual and not who they love. I am proud of who I am and I am proud of our community. I promise to be a leader for every single one of us. I will create a seat at the table for all. Thank you to all my supporters, volunteers, donors, my amazing friends, my Paharo Panthers, Go Panthers, many who are watching right now. To my family, to my almost 100 year old grandma, Epi Tavoris, who's at home watching on channel 70. I love you grandma and happy early birthday. To my sister, my longest and best friend and her partner Efren. And my two nephews, Carson and Xander, who were on, who were by my side during the campaign trail, knocking on doors with me, of course, wearing our masks, socially distancing and hanging up signs, but getting them involved into the political system early, letting them know how it's run. It's not always pretty, but they're good. They got a taste of it. To my mom and my, her partner Ron. Mom, you are my, you are my rock. And you are a powerhouse in your own right. This community loves you. And I love you so much. And to my dad. My dad may not be here today. But I am who I am because of the lifelong lessons he instilled in me. Every time I look in the mirror at my reflection, I am reminded that my dad is still with me. We have a lot of work to do, Watsonville. As I said throughout my entire campaign, it is time for me to roll up my sleeves and get back to work. There is a quote from an unknown person that I recently ran across while teaching. It's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. I hope that we can move forward as a community who can respect each other, no matter our differences that we may or may not have. Gracias por todo su apoyo. Juntos nos levantaremos. I wish you all a happy holidays. Please be safe, wear your mask. And remember to socially distance. We will make it through this pandemic stronger, healthier, and together. Thank you. Obrigado y gracias.
Thank you for those words, Jimmy. With your permission, I will, uh, finish, uh, this part of the agenda with, uh, comments. And then I'll hand it over to you for public hearings, ordinance, and appeals. Is that okay?
Mayor, take it on out.
Okay, so, uh, you may have noticed that, uh, almost all of the council members have spoken, have said some words, except for council member Estrada and council member Hurst. So we will now give those two council members an opportunity to say a few words if they wish to speak. So why don't we start with Francisco?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just, uh, uh, just want to say thank you to, uh, welcome to our, our newest members. Uh, welcome back to those that were here and are, are back. Uh, you know, uh, you've taken a great journey, uh, that is, and we're, we're happy to have you here. Um, I'm looking forward to the future. I'm looking forward to working with each of you. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, the, the other individuals that ran this year that, uh, Mr. Tony Gomez, uh, Vanessa Kidos Carter, who also ran and, um, because they love this community. And so, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to, uh, the next year. I'm, uh, looking forward to supporting, uh, Mayor Dutra in, uh, in the many goals that we will have for the city. I'm looking forward to supporting and working alongside Eduardo, who I know loves this community deeply and, uh, continuing to work with, uh, Aurelio and, uh, the rest of the council, Mayor Pro Tem Parker. And so, uh, it's a great day. Today it's a new start. And so here's to, um, here's to a better, uh, to, to a bright future for the city of Watsonville. And thank you, Mayor, uh, Garcia, for everything that you've done. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Kaufman Gomez, uh, thank you both for your steady leadership. And, uh, we will not soon be forgetting, uh, everything you've done for us. So, uh, welcome everyone and, uh, looking forward to start the work.
Thank you for your words, Francisco. Lowell.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I don't, I don't have the last word here because the last word will be a lot later on. But I do want to say I thank you to all the contenders and, uh, the successful candidates. And, and thanks for the service, uh, of, of a great team. You know, all this swearing, uh, swearing in reminds me, uh, like, uh, the ball player, uh, Yogi Barra said, that's, uh, kind of deja vu all over again. And I, I remember when I was first sworn in in 1989, right after the earthquake and Betty Murphy was the mayor then. And then I get to thinking about how many mayors and how many council members that I've been able to serve with over, over all these years. And, uh, I, I couldn't count them all on my, my fingers and toes. There were so many. So I'll, I'll write that down sometime and, and share that. But we got a great team here. I've known Jimmy for a long, long time. He was one of my students when he was 16 or 17 years old. And I got to know his sister first because she was a great big star at the, uh, Watsonville Future Farmers of America. She showed cattle and just about every other type of livestock and had lots of the FFA projects. And so congratulations to the family there. We've got a great team. You know, I've been sworn in six times, four terms, four, four year terms, a two-year term, and I even was appointed once when, uh, Bill Neighbors, uh, left us, uh, off the council. And I want to say thank you to Bill because he had kind of opened the door for my return. And, and I understand he might not be feeling so well these days. So Bill, if you're out there, uh, I say thank you so much. And, uh, and I thank everyone in the community. It's, it's a teamwork effort. We need to pull together. Everybody's got my cooperation. I want to do the right thing for as many people as I possibly can. And let's just work together and as everybody else said, you know, do a little volunteer work, help out a little bit, try and be constructive and, and let's get things done. Thank you very much. I'll yield my time.
Thank you, uh, Lowell for your word. Okay, uh, moving on, we have, uh, time for public comments. So if there's anybody in the public who wishes to, uh, share your thoughts, uh, please raise your hand and you'll be acknowledged.
Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I say these comments not as a newly elected member of the Board of Trustees of Carrillo Community College, but as a five-year resident of District Seven in Paharo Village. First of all, Madam Mayor, thank you for being stalwart, steady, compassionate, and transparent. It has been a pleasure to face you, uh, on camera, uh, at every city council meeting. And yes, I know I have just bombarded you with requests for signatures and petitions and all kinds of stuff. You may not want to have heard from me, but you have been resolute in being polite and cheerful and acknowledging the reasons why I sent them to you. Thank you for your service. You're the best. You are a delightful human being. We're very happy to have you. Next, I want to acknowledge my dear and wonderful friend Jimmy Dutra. Jimmy, you couldn't possibly have made me any more proud than I am tonight. You truly show what it's like to be able to persevere despite adversity. And for those of us who are LGBT, we salute you. And it's so good to know that you are now mayor and the LGBT community is well served. So thank you for being such a wonderful friend and ally. And I will be there just like I did with, uh, Paco and Rebecca, sending you emails almost on a daily basis. And I hope you won't resent it because again, the reason I send them is not because I want to be a pain in the butt, but because I too love this community and you don't have to live in this community all your life to love it. And I am proof of that. So thank you. And I'm hoping to work with Pat, with, uh, with Felipe on the Carrillo Board of Trustees. And thank you, Trina Gomez, for your great work. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, uh, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Is there anybody else that wish?
Felipe, go ahead. Felipe. Felipe, your hand was up. Were you intending to speak at this time? Maybe not. His hand has been up for a while, so let me move on. Juliana, go ahead.
Hi, City Council. This is Valerie, a dear friend of Jimmy. And I have here my two beautiful daughters and my mom is also on here. And my family and I are very proud of you, Jimmy, for all your hard work for this community and dedication. And, um, being mayor, you, Watsonville is going to benefit from your leadership. And we're really proud of you, Jimmy.
Thanks, Val. Thanks, Elba. Thanks, girls. Bye.
Madhu, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for the meeting tonight. I'm not that involved in what's going on, but now that Jimmy is the mayor, congratulations, Jimmy. I hope to get more involved. And I wish you all a happy holiday and stay safe. And, and again, thanks for your help. And I'd like to meet Francisco too. He is our district person.
Your district rep, yes. Thank you, Madhu. I missed district four, but I will be representing all of us.
Great. Thank you. That's it.
Gary, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? I, 83 years ago, I was born just down the street on, on, uh, East Beach Street. I have never been so proud of Watsonville. Oh, excuse me. Couple glasses of wine. I love all you people. Good job. I am so proud of you. Thank you so much. Wonderful words. Thank you for sharing that with us. Next, next.
I guess is, um, is that Iri? Yes. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Irieth Ruiz. I'm a teacher and a community member. And I wanted to congratulate Jimmy on being our new mayor. Um, thank you. And also I wanted to congratulate, congratulate Mr. Montesino. Thank you. Um, thank you. We're really excited, uh, for our friend Jimmy Dutra. Thank you for always supporting our students, not recently, but for the last, forever. Thank you so much. We're really excited and, um, thanks, everybody. Have a great night and happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you. Nancy, go ahead.
Well, good evening. I, first of all, I missed the opportunity to thank Trina for her long, um, service. And having served on the council with her, it, she's, uh, put in a lot of time and effort. And I really appreciate all she's done for the community. And then Felipe, he was there right beside me too, and I really appreciate his work. And now he's on to another adventure at, at Carrillo College. So congratulations to him. Um, Rebecca, I don't know what to say about you. I've known you forever. And I think you've had a, a very difficult year, but you've done, you've like a champ. You're right there and you've done a great job and really appreciate your leadership as mayor. Um, Paco, it's great to see you again and you too Lowell. I'm glad you're back. Aurelio, congratulations. It's good to have you here. Eduardo, what can I say? You're back on the council and congratulations. Good for you. Um, Ari, I, I have to extend my sincere congratulations to you because as your new role of vice mayor, it's, it's an important role. And, um, you're going to represent district seven very well. So thank you. Thank you. And then of course Jimmy, back on the council, um, mayor, awesome job. You got elected, you're here, and I just can't wait for the council to go forward. And, and under your leadership, you and Ari are going to make a good team, the rest of the council. So good luck to all of you and my, my very best.
Thank you, Nancy.
Maria Elena, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Maria Elena de la Garza from the Community Action Board in District Two. And I just want to say congratulations and welcome to our new city council members. And I want to say thank you to our outgoing council members. I, your leadership has just been really critical in a really difficult year. I want to thank Mayor Garcia. You know, Rebecca, you have such a strength in leadership. You're always there. You're present. You listen. You're engaged and you respond. And I really want to appreciate your leadership and your, and, and your efforts in a very difficult year. So thank you, Rebecca, for doing what you do. Um, and, um, new mayor Jimmy, I'm really excited for you. Um, please know that you can count on our support. Um, CAB is here to be of service and our job is to help this team, all of this team be successful. So that ultimately our community is successful and thrives. And so welcome Jimmy. Um, know that you can count on us. And I just want to say a thank you to Aurelio, who has, sits on the CAB board. Um, again, a really difficult year, Aurelio, and your leadership has been very critical for our agency. Lowell, my thanks to you for sitting on our finance committee and each one of you, thank you for your leadership. You really make me proud to be of Watsonville. And I'm very excited about what is, what is coming because we have a very hopeful 2021. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Maria Elena. Is there someone else?
Avril, go ahead. Hmm, hold on. Avril. You should come in. Okay, Avril, I will get, April, I will, I will get to you. Um, I'm just having technical, oh no, there you are. Somebody by the last name Dutra?
Hello, my name is Lori Dutra. I'm, uh, Jimmy's sister. I'm calling, um, in from Southern California due to the social distancing, um, and us trying to, uh, help the community and, and do our part. Um, I'm really saddened that I can't be there tonight, um, to celebrate with Jimmy or be by his side. Um, but I just want to say I'm so proud of you, Jimmy. I remember when we were nine and 10 and, um, we were with Leon Panetta in the White House. And dad had taken us there and I knew from that day on it was your calling. Um, from you working in the White House, I've, I've always been very proud and you stuck it out with Watsonville. You love Watsonville. That is your, that's, that's our hometown. And I'm really proud, I'm really proud of you, Jimmy. And so, um, anyways, there's two good, good year.
Thank you, sister. Love you.
Love you too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, for your, uh, words.
Go ahead and unmute and is your turn to speak now? Let's see. You may be still there.
No.
Now you're there?
Pretty much, Eminem's.
I think you need to unmute your mic. Do you want to unmute your mic? I'm sure you know how, right?
Yeah, she's my student.
Glasses.
Hello.
Hi, Avril.
I just wanted to say congrats.
Thank you. I'm so surprised. Thank you, Avril, for doing this. This is sweet.
Let me see.
This just shows you that we have problems with our internet. And we just, you know, these are big issues that we're facing where we need to make sure that everyone's getting broadband and internet, that it's getting into their houses, that it can work.
I have two more people in the room that want to speak. Abel, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, council members. I want to thank you all for your service. This is Abel Sanchez, living in District Five, and also your representative on the... Take that's again to my...
Thank you.
That we have right now. I thank you, Aurelio, for your service. Really well appreciated. I want to thank you as well, Lowell, for everything. You know, thank you being there because you go back as well, back to high school. So thank you again for your help. And then Rebecca, no, I just, I think, I just want to say that I think you did a really good job. Despite the circumstances, you really stuck through it and you make us all proud. So continue to do on the same good work that you've been doing. And then Jimmy, congratulations. Congratulations for being mayor. I know, you know, it was your time about two years ago, but you gave it up. You gave it up to serve the community. So I think it's great to see that.
Thank you, Abel.
To the city. And then for Eduardo Montesino, and I just want to really, really thank you for your service as well. I know I've shared this with you before, but I'm still really happy and I'm really glad, you know, for you allowing me to shadow you about six years ago, back when I was interested in running for office. So I just want to know that that really means a lot to me. And I know that's a commitment, the community, the thing that that's going to come. So everyone for your help. And I know it's challenging at times, but I really appreciate your determination and continuing to serve this community or making this community better.
Thank you, Abel, for your words.
Okay, Valentina? Valentina, do you want to unmute your mic?
Oh, I didn't realize my mic was muted. Sorry. Hi, I'm one of Mr. Dutra's students. I would just say, I just want to say the congratulations. I'm really proud of him. I guess he just, I'm really like, I'm just really excited that he's going to be our mayor. And I'm really thankful that he's my teacher. He's a great teacher. And I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thanks, Valentina. You're a great student. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
That concludes public comment. I don't see any other hands up.
Very, very good. Okay, so we have finished this section. And we're now on to ten public hearings, ordinance and appeals. And I turn it over to you, Jimmy.
Thank you. There goes the lighting. See? Okay, um. So we are moving on into public hearings and ordinance, consideration of fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget update and related actions. So do we have a report on this?
Yes, one second. Let me promote Cindy. Okay, she's coming in.
Cindy Surratt, our Administrative Services Director, Mayor Dutra will be giving the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. The floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Can you guys see me and hear me? Okay, gonna share my screen. Alrighty. So this is going to be our, this is our next budget update. This is our, this is actually our quarter one budget update. So it is a budget update for the quarter that ended in September 30th. Just keep in mind, it does take a while to get data and do the analysis. So here we go. So just a little kind of, I like to start with just a little reflection of where we are because we've been through a lot of different waves in the last few months. Again, as I mentioned, this presentation is reflective of data that ended on September 30th. And if you look at the New York Times curve every day like I do, that you'll see that December, in September, we were actually pretty low as a nation and kind of in a comfortable spot. That's clearly changed since then. So, you know, the other thing to note about this data is the sales tax data that we have right now is only, and that I'm presenting on, is only through the end of June 30th because there's a whole quarter lag by the time the state gets the state's sales tax and sends it on to us. So just a couple of caveats about what I'll be presenting. So where are we after, you know, months of being sort of in the orange and the red tier throughout the summer and early fall? Santa Cruz, along with most of the state, has now been returned to the purple. And of course, we're on the verge of new stay-at-home orders and some other orders that are already in place. We're also on the verge of many of the stimulus provisions that were put into act by Congress, you know, early in the spring. They all have deadlines of December 31st. So all CARES money must be spent by December 31st, EFMLA provisions end December 31st. And extended unemployment benefits have also end on December 31st unless the Congress can put together another stimulus package. So a lot of things that we think have sort of been buoying our economy to the extent that they have are currently slated to end very soon. We also know that PVUSD has announced school closures through March 1st at a minimum, which affects, of course, working parents and their abilities to get back to work, even if they're allowed to, based on stay-at-home orders. And then just last week, Governor Newsom announced a new round of sales tax extensions and tax payment extensions for small businesses across the state. So those are just a lot of the kind of moving parts that we're sort of dealing with when trying to make financial projections. Overall, though, as I presented in September, our general fund revenues are much stronger than we anticipated during the budget process. So property tax is still not really showing signs of being severely impacted. Though the rolls will close in January, which will then predict what we're getting in future years. And I still haven't gotten a payment for this year yet. That always comes at the end of December. But as of right now, there's no news that that property tax is really being impacted by the current recession. Utility tax is tracking along sort of a normal trajectory. Hotel tax is in fact down by 50%, which is what we projected in the budget. But as you know, that's a much smaller portion of our budget. So it's not something I'm super concerned about at this moment. It does seem to be peaking a little bit up in this quarter, but we'll see more when the tax remittance has actually come in. So, you know, all in all, what I presented in September, if you'll recall, was sort of a range with the budget being the worst case scenario. And then I was having a best case scenario of being several million dollars better than budget. I think the range is still there, though I am, at this point, I feel like we are leaning more towards the optimistic scenario. And even that optimistic scenario, I do want to point out and make sure that it's very clear, that doesn't mean growth. So that still means that we'll be about flat from last year's budget. It doesn't necessarily mean new money. It just means that we're not going to be below where we have been in the past. I wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive into sales tax just because I think that's really the revenue stream that's kind of indicative of what's happening in the economy and the world right now. So again, you can see that the red bar is what we budgeted. We budgeted a 25% decline for this fiscal year. And then the blue and the green bar are sort of our current projections. So we wound up ending fiscal year 1920 only 1% below where we were in the prior year. And currently, right now, our sales tax consultants are projecting that we'll be only about a percent down as our optimistic scenario again. So the quarter of April through June was down 6% from the prior year. And I think, you know, the April through June quarter is the quarter that everybody had sort of thought would be our worst quarter. I'm not so sure that that's going to be the case. I think it has yet to be seen what is the current quarter that we're in. You know, people's holiday spending and how that's going to be sustained through all these changes and the extended recession that we're sort of coming into. So yeah, again, again, sort of the story is, is that even at our best case, we'll probably be about flat or maybe just a couple of percent below where we were the prior year. I want to show a couple of things that I think are interesting about Watsonville sales tax right now. So this chart is showing Watsonville's sales tax compared to Santa Cruz County, Central Coast and all of California. And you'll see that everybody sort of took a really deep dive from the first quarter or from fourth quarter to first quarter. And then everybody else kept going down and Watsonville has this little tick up. So there's a couple of things going on here. I've said this in the past, but I think one of the things that is happening is that Watsonville people are probably spending more of their share of spending in Watsonville than perhaps they had in the past. I think in the past, perhaps you would go to Santa Cruz for a night out or have gone to Santa Cruz to go to Costco or have gone to Capitola Mall to stroll and shop when they had shopping to do. I think, and our consultants also think that, you know, behavior is changing and people are wanting to stay local and kind of get in and get out. And so that would mean that our people are spending more of their money in town. The other thing that's happening with that is related to the way online sales tax is allocated to people. So I'm going to show another slide here. So this kind of tealish-green bar is how much online sales tax Watsonville has gotten. And so you can see where pretty much every other category of sales has dropped dramatically. Online sales has dramatically increased. And so part of that is, of course, people shopping online. The other part of that is that we are now getting a bigger share of the pool. So sales tax are allocated by county. And then they are allocated from the county to cities based on how much sales are happening inside your borders. And so as Capitola and Santa Cruz have really been sort of devastated by their loss of tourism, their share of the online sales have also gone down. So Watsonville is getting a little bit of a boost that when those other cities, downtowns and shopping districts are able to come back to life, if they do, our share will go back down. So we're kind of being floated a little bit right now. So again, sort of the overall picture that I really want to highlight is, is that, you know, even at our most optimistic scenario, we are probably going to be flat, about flat from last year's revenues. And so that brings me to wanting to talk about, and so I want to put this into some context because I keep saying that we are, you know, we're going to end this year with extra money. But I want to take some time to explain why that extra money doesn't mean we can run out and spend it all away, right? There's a big difference between one-time money and ongoing money. And so this was our budgeted five-year financial plan. When we budgeted, we budgeted with knowing that the gold bars expenditures were going to be higher than our revenues for this year. And we are covering that difference with reserves. The problem is that we have an out-year problem as well, right? We have a structural deficit problem made worse by this recession. So you can see that all of that space above the blue line is, you know, expenditures that we have more than our revenues. And we had planned that next year we would spend a little bit of reserve on that, but there was still rooms to make up. So basically, our revenues are doing better, but we have about a three and a half million dollar gap each year for the next five years where without changes to behavior or revenues, we need to make reductions or changes. So again, so this was the budget it was, right? We expected the blue line would go really far. I'm going to zoom in a little bit and try to explain something. Bear with me. I'm trying to be kind of conceptual here. I hope nobody gets out their old high school geometry and starts to, or quote me on things, but so bear with me for one second. All right, so this is the curve of where we thought our revenues were going to go, where we thought they were going to drop really far and then kind of have a slow up. This is what it now looks like is sort of happening, right? It looks like the drop isn't nearly as dramatic as we thought it was going to be. But it's still going down and then it's coming back up a little bit. So this amount of money that we're having in extra, this kind of shaded part here. And again, forgive me, I'm not a graphic designer. I'm a finance director. But that becomes one-time money, right? Because we're just filling in the dip. We're not actually moving the whole curve up, okay? So the only part that becomes ongoing capacity is this little bit in the out-years where the curve has actually moved up. But all of this filling in the gap, that's one-time money. We can't take all of that and add back new positions or sign new bargaining agreements or enter into new contracts because in the end, we're just going to wind up having to cut that again. So I want to illustrate that in another way on this slide, right? So again, the blue line is where we thought our revenues were going to be at the five-year when I presented the budget. It now looks like it's going to be better, right? And so to some extent, the curve is moving up, but we have a lot of gap to make up between our expenditures and this kind of purplish line. And this purplish line, I can't tell you yet where it's going to exactly land. It's going to be above the blue line, but it might actually fall somewhere inside our projected expenditures. It might fall higher. I think it depends a lot on what, how long the pandemic lasts, what kind of stimulus comes out, how many businesses actually close permanently. There's still so many unknowns. And so this purple line can kind of go up and down at this point. So, you know, what we can do right now is add expenditures and add expenditures that go up to where we think the purple line is going to be. What I don't want to do is recommend to the council anything that is going to put us in a place where we have now ongoing expenditures that in two years from now or in six months from now, when we're working through the budget process, I'm going to have to come back to you and cut, right? So in the budget process, we're going to have to budget for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. So what I don't want to do is kind of get exuberant right now and take good news and add back a lot of expenditures that then we may have to turn around and cut. I think there's, what we're probably going to wind up with is some amount of one-time money that we can then figure out how to expend. But adding back ongoing expenses is just, it's still, we still need to be cautious. We just still really need to wait and see what the longer-term effects of the recession are going to be. So I hope that makes sense. And now I'm going to go into just some of the few appropriation recommendations we are making right now. So the first is with our fire department. So the fire department had strike teams. They had teams going out around the state essentially all of July through the end of October. And so they already incurred a lot of overtime costs for this that they will be reimbursed for. They've already submitted reimbursements to CalOES. So we're asking for essentially the money that they're going to get back from CalOES to be given back to the department. So we're asking for $492,000 in appropriations for them. But this is all one time and is completely backed by their own revenues. The community development department has sort of been on a wild ride the last few months. If you remember, during the budget process, we cut them pretty severely because they had a month of April where their activity was down 75%. Since that, then they've really kind of bounced back. And through the first quarter, they were performing sort of at average levels. And then in just the last month or so, they seem to be, they seem to be at average and not below at all. So we had reduced that department. So we had reduced that department by three positions during the budget and and by a large amount of contract money that they often use to perform specialized services. So we're proposing to add back about half of that with a one and a half positions and some contract dollars. These are all ongoing expenses, but again, their revenues are, they're really pulling in revenues, probably even higher than this two hundred thousand dollars that we're asking for. So this is is all ongoing, but it's completely backed by their own revenues. The Parks and Community Services Department, they're another one sort of on a very wild ride. They're, again, they're not able to offer their normal recreation activities, but they still are maintaining parks. And it's become a little bit more expensive because they now have to, at least for the facility, spend more money for COVID restrictions. They've been offering an Excel and place a school-based camp at many of their sites that the county and the school district are paying for. So some of that is bringing its own revenue. And then, as you see, we, I don't know if you remember, we entirely cut the special events department or the division. But they have been really creatively trying to find ways to offer various types of special events. And so they need a little bit of money to to kind of support those efforts. So all told, we're asking for two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for the Parks and Community Services Department. The bulk of that right now is one time. I also have some money in there to to get them some new vehicles. There's a little bit of it revenue-backed. We do hope that in February, when the next update, I'll come back to you with an even even fuller developed package to help rebuild that department with the hope that by spring and summer, they're actually able to offer some of their their normal services, though probably not in a normal way. And then the IT department was really struggling kind of before the pandemic. I was speaking with Rex earlier today, and he noted that their department is still the same size as it was ten years ago. And clearly, our reliance on IT has changed dramatically in the last ten years. And then particularly during this pandemic, as departments have been rushing to get their their departments to be able to provide more customer service online, to get people to work from home, even to run these meetings online. So that department, you know, as it was already struggling before, is struggling even more. So we're asking to add two positions back, one which was cut during the budget. One would be an actual new position, but we're asking for two positions and then a number of some money for some hardware, some software. We're running out of storage space for our document managed system and some consultant help to get them caught up and and help them create sort of a more strategic plan. So we're asking for about three hundred thousand dollars for that department, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of the one time. And this department is actually supported by the entire city. So the general fund has a share, and so do the enterprise funds. Similarly, the city clerk is asking for some money for basically software that has allowed them to work more remotely, including DocuSign and Zoom and some other legislative software. So so in a similar package that that goes into this request. And then finally, the police department, we in the budget to help save Measure G and Measure Y money had put their normal patrol vehicle replacement money into a narcotics fund. Upon some additional research, we have found out that that funding cannot be used for patrol vehicles, but we know we have patrol vehicles, some very expensive ones to maintain that they need to replace. And so we're asking to shift that funding over to Measure G and Measure Y because, as I stated, the sales tax is going to be doing much better. So we think Measure Y can actually handle it now. So we're asking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars for Measure Y, but it is one time. Just a little bit of summary, again, sort of focusing on one-time versus ongoing. So you can see in the general fund, we're asking for over a million dollars of appropriation authority, but seven hundred thousand dollars of it is is one time, very much revenue-backed. There's actually, so only that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what we're asking is an ongoing appropriation at this time, which, again, I I think we can handle because we will be over what we assumed the five-year plan would be, and we just don't know how far yet. And then down below is kind of the summary of the other funds. So the other funds, their their expenditure impacts is really just their share of the IT expenses. So the next step is that I will come back with a mid-year report, as I always do in February. At that point, you can also expect a very more in-depth update to the five-year plan. So we'll better understand how much is one time, how much is ongoing. And it'll actually be our official kickoff to the budget season. And the next budget cycle, as I mentioned, we have to budget balance to to fiscal years. Okay? With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Cindy, for that report. I guess it's the last report for before twenty twenty-one, when we start coming seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm only going to call on you guys if you raise your hand and have a question, because some people may not have any questions, so may not even need to do it. I almost called you Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, Cindy, can you go back to the page before the next steps or before the questions?
Yeah. Hang on, let me just, I'm going to share again. The summary slide?
Yeah, yeah. So on this one, I'm wanting to understand it. So the this one million, seven hundred plus, it's coming from all these different funds? Is that what's happening?
Right, right. So one point one million, almost one point two million is from the general fund. The the Information Services Fund is sort of looking like a duplicate, but it's being funded by the sewer, the water, the airport, and the solid waste is going actually to support those IT expenses that I explained.
Okay, so in terms of the general fund expenditures, that that's the amount coming from the general fund. Can you be more specific in terms of all the different avenues where we got that much money in the general fund to use?
Right. So you can see on the the table on the top, I have the revenues listed there. So the one-time revenues, the five hundred and twenty-five, that is basically about five hundred thousand dollars that the fire department will get for their reimbursements. And then there's about thirty-five thousand dollars that is money coming from the county and the school district to support the Excel and Place Camp at the school district or at the Parks Department. And then that ongoing revenue is is the is the is the permitting revenue. That's the CDD department. So that's their revenues coming, and that's the ongoing revenue. And then that balance there, what I'm showing, that's basically going to be funded by our excess revenues coming in overall. Right? So that that comes in as the extra sales tax, the extra property tax, or or those taxes coming in better than we had expected. That's what's going to fund that that gap.
Okay.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap.
So I'm just wanting to feel comfortable that this amount of money over one million dollars, it's no big deal coming from, you know, it's coming from different sources and not just from the general fund.
Right, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Is there somebody else who would like to ask? Councilmember Hearst, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Cindy, if there was one thing you could say or a couple of things you could say to the residents of Watsonville and and the economic base of our community, what would you, what would you advise them? Or what what can they do to assist us?
Shop local. Shop local. As I said, the way that county pools work is that our our share of the online sales is based on how much physical in Watsonville shopping people do. So to the extent that people can shop at Target and not at Costco, we not only get that actual sales tax money, it helps us boost our portion of the county pools. So shopping local is sort of doubly important. And I really encourage that. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Hearst. Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Cindy, on the ongoing expenditures for the hiring of personnel, are we going to be able to sustain that within a two, three-year timeframe? I have a concern because, I mean, coming up this next year, being the winter months when a lot of our labor force is really unemployed and reducing their their expenditures and it might impact our revenue resource sources. Are we going to be able to maintain that without touching our reserves?
I I think the little bit that I'm recommending now, we'll be able to, if you if I go back to that slide, the little bit that I'm recommending now, it was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ongoing. I think we can, because I do think the curve is going to be much better than what we presented in budget. But like I said, we still have, we have a three and a half million dollar ongoing gap to get to. So I think we have to really be cautious and prioritize. And I think if you talk to, so that basically the unfunded ongoing cost right now, the bulk of that is made up by the IT department. And I think if you talk to any director, any of us in the city of Watsonville, we will all say that the IT department is really sort of from an internal service, which then allows us to provide external service really in need at this moment. So I am comfortable recommending that right now. And then hopefully in February, when I have more information, hopefully we can recommend a little bit more. And then hopefully with the budget process, we can recommend a little more. But I want to be able to recommend to you incremental increases and not get to a place where we add too much back too fast, and then I have to be asking for cuts again.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor Dutra. Cindy, thank you for the report. I had sort of a are there aspects of sort of these behaviors that you were mentioning that you feel will probably stay with us even after post-pandemic? After the the pandemic has gone? You know, I'm sort of, you know, necessity is the mother of invention, and I'm just sort of impressed by the the rise of like these social media mini entrepreneurs of people selling stuff. And I'm wondering, is there any way to sort of like to encourage them to get business licenses, to have them pay taxes? You know, I feel like Instacart is something that will stay stick around for a while. So are there like these mini industries that we can sort of organize or at least try to to do something with to bump revenues a little bit?
You know, I think I think that the government is going to have to catch up a little bit. And for us, for example, reorganizing our business license would would take an ordinance change. But it is, it is interesting, and I, as I follow sort of CFO chats and blogs and things, you know, people are are sort of thinking about these things. So these are, these are really good points that you're bringing up. And I don't think we have an answer yet, but I I do think there's going to be some amount of catch-up that government's going to have to do to make sure our tax law aligns with the way, the new way people choose to do, live their lives and work and run their businesses.
And I would just add to Cindy's comments, Councilmember Estrada, that, you know, when you see a fifty percent spike in online spending, that's not going to change overnight, right? And so I think those consumer, some of those consumer habits are here to stay permanently. Watsonville has been the been the beneficiary of some of that, as we see those revenues increase and partially offset some of our local losses. But, you know, part of what's encouraging too is some of our small entrepreneurs that have shifted to online social media accounts, stores like Forever Fly or Queen Shoes, they have business license, they're collecting sales tax, it goes back to local coffers and local services and programs. So we're continuing to look for ways we can partner with the chamber to expand that. And it's a great opportunity because it's a lot easier to open an online business than it is to open brick and mortar, right?
Exactly.
There's potential there.
And a little bit to your point, I think, Mr. City Manager, you can probably answer this. Why don't we do more? Why don't we invest more for really fiber or high-speed internet than in the city of Watsonville, you know? I mean, not just for our students, which, I mean, we need to support our students, but for the new economy, that's really sort of this pandemic has really shown us has a ton of potential to really be a game changer.
So I think one of our, one of our hidden secrets is that Watsonville has actually one of the most robust fiber networks in all of the Monterey Bay. And it's been something that we've been trying to leverage as we work with internet service providers like Cruise.io. We actually lease space on our fiber network to service providers that want to come in and expand access. So we've done a lot of good work in that front. Of course, there's more that we can do. And as we all struggle with bandwidth bandwidth issues and getting kicked off Zoom calls, it underscores that need. But I do want to just really tout the great work our staff have done over the years to put that network in place. So, you know, more to come. And poor Ari, I know, has been trying to all night, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Cindy, for your presentation. I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Estrada. Great questions. Is there anybody else that would have any questions on the this item? Otherwise, we will go ask some questions to the public. All right, without seeing anybody else have any of the questions, I will go out to the public.
Right. Steve, go ahead.
Yes, this is a question based on my recent election as a Cabrillo trustee. The president of Cabrillo reported to me yesterday that attendance or enrollment is down eighteen percent at Cabrillo College. I'd like to ask Cindy, Cindy, does that have an effect on tax revenue for the city of Watsonville or not?
I don't think so.
I think he's meaning because there's the the campus right here in Watsonville. Does it, do we get tax money?
Correct.
No.
Not directly.
Not directly. I mean, we would indirectly just by having student presence and you know, buying coffee, going to coffee shops and going to lunch and that kind of thing in in town. But I don't think just the downward enrollment on its face would impact our tax revenues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have another caller?
Yes. Eileen Clark. Eileen.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi. I, um, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, Eileen, we can hear you.
Thank you. Sorry. I had a couple of comments. I put them in writing, but I'm not sure whether I should also
Yeah, go ahead.
Be great to ask them. Okay, one of them is that if I understood the budget presentation correctly, money was taken away from Parks and Rec because of the program stopped being offered right now. And yet, it, I I frequently walk by Callahan Park and the skate park and there are so many kids there, which is so great, you know, that they're using the skate park and playing basketball at Callahan. And I can just see the need for someone there to be monitoring their social distancing and their use of masks. And every time I walk by there, I think there should be someone there passing out masks, you know? And so it it feels to me like some of that money that had been taken away from Parks and Rec could have been used for monitoring those those areas. I don't know if that's, you know, a possibility in the future. And then the other thing is that I don't know if the city of Watsonville has looked into the idea of participatory budget creation. I know there are several cities in California that are using it now where the public is, different interest groups in the public are invited in while the budget is being created and not just sort of, you know, apprised of it at the end. So I'd really like, like the council to look into that as well and so that there's more participation. You know, by 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 the general public in in the budget creation and that, not just this sort of minor opportunity to see it at the end of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Appreciate it. Is somebody else?
I had one other person, but I want to say, oh,
I had one other person, but I wanna say, oh, there you are, there you are. Go ahead, Eileen. I had lost you.
So my question is, when we have these pop-ups that have been very successful with local artists like down at the plaza that they come and they sell their stuff, is that taxes that we get? Or do they have to be Watsonville businesses selling at these pop-ups? And then, then we get the tax revenue from it? If that makes sense.
It would depend on how and if they report their taxes. So I honestly, I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Okay, um, thank you for trying. I'll find a different way to word it next time to get my answer. I agree with what Eileen said about taking money from Parks and Rec. We weren't happy about it when you guys did it at the beginning of the year, you know? So I agree with her as well, with community input. If y'all take us seriously when we come in and we express ourselves, because we as a community, I remember there was a lot of us on that call that we just were not happy with the way that the city budget was set up and what you guys were gonna prove and all that. And then y'all just went ahead and approved it anyway, and it was like no one that spoke even mattered. So like Eileen said, if y'all could take us a little bit more into these kind of decisions, because her idea of passing out masks is great and would be very beneficial to our community. So if we could have those voices have input into these kind of decisions that are matter to our city, I hope that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there another caller?
No, I believe that's the end, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. All right, I'll bring it back. I mean, in the old days, I guess we were like making comments, but I guess we're looking for a motion at this point, right? So is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, I'd like to move the resolution amending the 2020, 2021 budget to authorize 1,726,730 buckaroos for the appropriation of, to the various funds.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Montesino?
Just like to second that.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Is there discussion? Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, I think that the, the story we heard is we didn't get here by ourselves, and it's not an accident that we have a, a fairly robust and, and solid budget, thanks to the conservative nature of, of our city and, and are watching our Ps and Qs and, and not going overboard with anything, but which really the, the folks in the, in the city that make it happen by shopping locally, by improving their property and by paying their taxes as well. And so it's a joint effort that we all need to stick together on. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to second that as well. I, you know, it's very important to shop locally. When you spend tax money inside of our city limits, that money comes to us. And as you can see, our numbers are a little bit, you know, better than we had projected. So that's good news. And hopefully with COVID getting less under control, we can get these programs back up and running at some point early this coming year. You know, I, we have places, don't forget, there's Annie Glass, Queens Shoes and More, Forever Fly, like we said earlier, Kelly's Books. These are all places you guys can go. There's a lot more small local businesses that you can support. These all bring tax money and revenue to our community. And, you know, I think, I forgot who it was earlier, but I think it was City Manager Huffaker. I'm one of those people who have switched to buying online. I am now, I buy everything online. So I think it's, we are gonna see a change in this. It's just super convenient, especially when things arrive two days later. So I think we're gonna see a change in attitude from a lot of people. And I think we're gonna be benefiting from those taxes as well, because you, we get, we get the tax revenue for what spent, when you spend, when you buy online with the zip code that you use. So keep on supporting our communities. And yeah, anybody else? Councilmember Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor Dutra. I just wanted to thank Cindy and City Manager Huffaker for the, the planning that you, you, and the plan, really the plan that you, you put into place a few months ago. I know it was really a time of uncertainty. We really did not know what was gonna happen. I know we're not out of the, the woods yet, but we thank you for your thoughtfulness and your, your excellent planning. And hopefully things will be a pleasant surprise moving forward. And if not, I have complete trust in the two of you and being able to help us and guide us out of any sort of dilemma that we may have. So thank you both for your work.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? All right, let's take a vote. City Clerk Flores, does it need to be a roll call vote? There you go. Take it away.
Let me get the correct form. Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes. That unanimously passes. This is a good way to start a new council. All right, everybody. Thank you so much for your hard work. There any emergency items we need to add to the agenda? Or can we take a break until 2021? All right, I don't see any, so we will go on to, any requests and scheduling for future agenda items? Okay, Councilmember Garcia?
I have two items to request. This is my second request to establish a process to handle community complaints against city council members, if we can do that soon. Secondly, I recently participated in a webinar with Kaiser Permanente to learn about the tremendous increase in mental health issues such as anxiety and stress during this pandemic. I'd like a report to the council on how the city is supporting agencies that are addressing mental health. Those are my requests.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So noted. Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, thank you. You know, I think that we would benefit by some kind of training or retreat. There's been, there's been some trash talk in the community. I attended a, several workshops about race bias and prejudice. And I think that we might be able to benefit and, and share with others if we had more training on to, to kind of counter some of this race baiting and you know, something more team building, you know, some anti-bias training or more tolerance. You know, we hear, we hear all kinds of stuff about color of skin and age and sex biases. So I think we might benefit by having some kind of either public forum or some kind of training for the council, something team building and something, something to make, make sure that we know what to do and what to say.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Councilmember Hearst. All right, anybody else? Any agenda items they'd like to see in 2021? Councilmember Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor Dutra. I, I would, I don't know if it's possible, I'd like to maybe invite Copa to come and give a presentation on the House meetings and how that went and just, I would just love to hear some of the stories that they heard and, and some of the insights that they were able to gain by having those meetings.
Great, thank you. Council? Anybody else? All right, seeing no other people with their hands up. Everyone have a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you may be celebrating. And here is to a awesome 2021. We see a light at the end of the tunnel. Let's hope this vaccine works and gets distributed to all of us. Extra prayers and hope and love sent to our, our workers that are at the hospitals, our doctors, our nurses, you know, our ICU beds are filling up. So everyone, please be safe. Wear a mask, socially distance, and, you know, please keep away from partying. You know, because that's how the spread of COVID is happening. So let's get through the holidays and we can enjoy a great 2021. All right, everybody, meeting adjourned.
Merry holidays.